...will be led by Jennifer Batista and opening remarks by Ryan Lamon.
...to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Father in Heaven, we're grateful for this day. We're grateful that we could all meet together for a city council meeting. And we're grateful, we're grateful for the service that our council and mayor provide for our city. And we're also grateful for those that have come to participate and to give their input. And we ask that Thy Spirit be here to help us make the best decisions for the citizens here, the city, and that we can progress and work together. And we're grateful for all our many blessings. And we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Man, thank you. Okay, are there any adjustments to the agenda?
Yes, there are. We need to have item 9C is on the agenda. It is cancelled. It will be brought back on May 16th. So instead of continued, we're re-noticing it and everything. So we'll just cancel this item and re-notice it for the 16th.
Okay.
And then we also have, Kathy, which one was? 10E. 10E, which was our resolution to enter in our inter-local agreement for the vote by mail. We still have a couple things we need to get situated on that one before it's ready. So we'll move down to-
You want that continued?
Yes, to the 16th.
Also to the 16th?
Yep.
Okay, council, so one is cancelled, the other's continued.
But did you say that the 9C public crane was also moved to the 16th?
Well, it's, we need to cancel the item. We're re-noticing it. So you guys don't need to continue it because we're re-noticing the item.
But it should be back on here-
But it'll be back on the 16th. And then we also need an executive session to talk about a legal matter.
Okay. And that would be probably at the very end?
Yes.
We'll make that 16A. Okay. Yes, please.
I made the motion to approve tonight's meeting agenda with items 9C being cancelled at this time and 10E being continued to May 16th and adding an executive session for legal purposes.
Second, we have a motion by Sid, a second by Eric. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We need to have an open session now and judging by the number of people, if we could keep our remarks to three minutes and keep it polite. Thank you.
Mark, Ryan, PG. I don't want my three minutes to start yet because it'll probably take that long to apologize for having been so loud and kind of out of control with my thoughts in these last meetings. I didn't believe you when you said, "Why am I loud? And why am I so angry?" It was my 11-year-old daughter that asked me the same question afterwards. I'm three and a half years with a severe concussion. My thought process does not work like it used to work. And I disconnect a lot. And you've noticed that I can't keep my thoughts straight when I'm here. And so anyway, apology there. I'm aware of it now. And what I did now, you can start my three minutes if you want to.
Thank you.
Okay. I voiced my passion and feelings about what you're doing with the buildings here for a long time. I still think all of you are wrong in taking down these beautiful two buildings. You do have other choices. And I wish that you all would please go out in the community and talk to people, but don't set up the conversations. I mean, you've got all these committees and groups that you've listened to, whether you did what they said or not, I don't know. But I wish you would stop this process. I don't think that you have notified the residents properly. I know you haven't notified. The previous mayor, you know, they had some pretty hot meetings, but they were in disclosure to the residents. We knew, the public knew what was going on. And they came to these meetings. And you had very few people at these meetings when it was talking about what's happening here. And it's your fault. You did not communicate right with the residents. And I tried to explain this two weeks ago, but I couldn't get my thoughts out. You're going to have a great celebration on the bulldozing down of this wrecked building and the seminary building. There is no celebration. You are hurting the heart of the community. This block should be a green space, not a big building. This, the heart of this downtown area is the green, is this park area. And I've been fighting for years with you to turn this thing into a full-block city park. And I believe that's what should occur. You are powerful. You're getting your way. But we voted for this bond. And you did not let the public know properly what's going on. Walk the streets, knock on the doors. I've done many hundreds of homes. The residents don't want this to occur. The business people downtown don't want this to occur. Your committee or whatever you have for the downtown business, they don't go out and walk the streets. Absolutely. Or they would be getting the information that I get from these business owners and property owners. You are going against the will and wishes of the community. And I want you to stop. I want you to stop and step backwards and go out and find out. These people voted for you. When they find out, these buildings are coming down by seeing it come down. And obviously, it's going to be after strawberry days because you wouldn't let this happen before strawberry days.
Thank you, Mark.
Anyway, all right, I'll be back next week. Anyway, thank you.
Okay, next.
I think I timed mine. My name is Lori Duke, Pleasant Grove. I have the following concerns based on a car dealership that went in next door to my home, 570 South, 300 East. Following concerns, 300 South is already a high-traffic area, constant traffic-
Did you say 570 South?
I live at 570 South, 300 East.
Okay.
Directly behind Taco Amigo.
Okay.
Okay? And to the north of me, immediately to the north, a car dealership has gone into that property. 300 South is already a very busy street. It's only two lanes. There's a double yellow line right there.
Talking about on 300 East.
Yes, 300 South.
Off of one, I'm sorry.
300 South.
300 East.
570, 300 East, yes, sorry. 570 South, 300 East. So yes, south of the mortuary between State Street and 500.
So Taco Amigo, just on the other side.
Correct. Okay?
Got it. Thank you.
All right. Uh-huh. So it's a double yellow line there. There's no turn lane for anybody to make a left-hand turn. Traffic backs up significantly. It'd be five minutes to get out of my own driveway just to come to this meeting. Adding a business will only increase traffic, which will add to the nightmares that we see regularly there. Parking is a problem or will be a problem. Currently, people are parking on the street in front of my home. Came home one night, couldn't even get into my own driveway because people were parked in front of it. I can't pull out of my driveway because they parked so close to my driveway. I've been, almost been hit a couple of times trying to back out of my own driveway. And then there are children that live in that neighborhood. This is not a place to have a car dealership in that neighborhood. I've seen how car dealerships work and how they bring in big trucks to load and unload cars. If that's what's going to happen, that's going to create a huge problem in that area. The person that bought the property, we talked to him when he first initially came there and started making repairs. He told us that he was going to be moving in to the home with his family living there. That was the case clear up until January and February. And then all of a sudden, there's a sign out there saying there's a car dealership going in. As of a week and a half ago, he started moving cars in to the property. And people have been coming and looking at the cars. I would think that with this kind of a business, that there would be some sort of notice for us to come in and present and voice our concerns rather than just it showing up.
Hang on one second. Ken, can you just address the noticing and the designation for that area?
Okay. Yes, that property several years ago was rezoned to be commercial. And there has been some noticing sent out on the plats that are for that. And so it's just going through the regular procedures at this point, but it is a permitted use on that property.
Was the recent, was the recent approval noticed-
They have not yet been approved for a site plan. So I'm not sure what their current status is, but-
Okay, so do you know where they are in the process?
They had, where did-
They came to DRC about three weeks ago, where they were- They came to DRC about three weeks ago. And they were discussing what their plans are. We gave them our comments on that. So we expect that they'll be submitting a site plan sometime soon to show how they're going to develop the property and-
So they're not yet approved for what's going on?
They've got the sign up and they've got cars on the lot, selling.
Well, then we'll have to follow up on that.
The gentleman right here that's speaking?
Mm-hmm.
If you want to just get with him and give him whatever information you can, then we can follow up on this. Thank you. Appreciate you bringing it to our attention. Okay, anyone else? Let me, let me, one second, please. Stop the clock. So I apologize for not explaining that earlier. The open session is for anything that's not on the agenda or anything that's not a public hearing on the agenda. If there's no public input for the item, then you'll want to get up and say something now so that we can hear what you have to say. If there, if it is a public hearing, you can wait until we have the public hearing. Okay? Thank you. Go ahead.
My name is Jalen McFarland. I'm a member of the Historic Preservation Commission, one of the newly appointed members. In the city code, the title Article C states that the city recognizes that the historical heritage of the community is among its most valued, important assets. It is therefore the intent of the city to identify, preserve, protect, and enhance historic buildings, structures, sites, objects, and districts lying within the city limits. As members of the Historic Preservation Commission, we are tasked with this preservation, protection, identification, and enhancement. In order for us to adequately perform our duties, we need to be not only informed about any decision that is being made that affects any historic building, site, or district, but we must also participate in the decision-making about said building, site, or district. In fact, Section 2-C-8 says, "Properties which, in the opinion of the Historic Preservation Commission, no longer meet the criteria for eligibility, may be removed from the historic sites listed by the city council after recommendation of the commission." As I understand the city code, the Historic Preservation Commission has a strong responsibility to participate in any decision-making that affects any historic site, building, or district. Consequently, we must have the power to fulfill their responsibilities given us. If we are not given any power to affect any decision, then why have a commission? We need our opinions and observations to carry weight, and the only way to accomplish this is to have them backed. People in Pleasant Grove choose to live here instead of places like Orem and Provo because of the small-town feel and the historic significance of many buildings and historical sites. And we need to have some say in that.
Okay, hang on one second. Tina, can you address the, the commission kind of aspect from the state's perspective and the city and delegated authority?
Well, my understanding is, if I'm understanding your statements correctly, is you feel like the Historic Commission hasn't been involved in the decision?
We haven't been involved in the decision, although I do understand that we, most of us are new as of January. But when we have talked to our city representative who comes to our, you know, he's been telling us some things go on, and we haven't known anything about this. The only thing since we have all started is we have been party planners. We have been planning this. And I actually very much agree with the first gentleman who spoke. And I think he's right. If you talk to, talk to most people, they don't want these things being torn down.
Okay, so my understanding is, is that the Historical Commission has been involved probably prior to your being on the board. But what the mayor is asking is, is does the city council ultimately have the authority to act on historical buildings? And this, and they do. The state code allows them to make those types of decisions after consideration and consultation with the state historic board. And I believe that has been done, if I'm not mistaken, with regard to the historic value of this particular building.
I'm not talking about only one building. I'm talking about building several.
Okay, well, I'm-
Building sites, districts.
I'm only-
Can I make a suggestion? Let us sit down as staff and with the committee and go over what their role is based on what state code is. And then we'll come to an understanding, I think, as to how this works. And if there's some additional things or things that aren't quite clear, I think we can work through that. We'll start with on the staff level, or whatever we need to bring back to council, we can do that. But let, let staff take a crack at it and figure it out.
Can you just get directly with Scott? He's our city administrator, the one that just spoke.
Yeah.
And then he'll take care of organizing and getting together to understand where we're coming from here.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Eric Taylor, Pleasant Grove resident for about eight years. I'd like to suggest a change to the city ordinance on discharge of bows within city limits. I'd like to suggest that the section of municipal code pertaining to discharging weapons within city limits is too restrictive and does not allow for enough individual freedom of residents on privately-owned real property. Pleasant Grove, Utah, City of Trees, has deep ties to nature and the outdoors. Naturally, much of our community includes residents who have a passion for outdoor recreation. Currently, Title V, Chapter 4, Section 1A in the Pleasant Grove Municipal Code prohibits the recreational discharge of any gun, or pistol, or airgun, or to shoot any bow and arrow within the limits of the city, except in areas designated expressly by the city council or park areas designated for such activities. This does not allow for responsible members of our community to safely recreate on personally-owned property in a manner consistent with our community's values and love for the outdoors. I propose a change to the current municipal code to allow for the discharge of bows specifically while addressing the safety of our community. This would not only increase the value of residency for current residents, but continue to make PG an attractive location for like-minded future residents and businesses. I offer our sister-city American Fork as an example of the type of changes I'm proposing. Title IX, Chapter 6, Section 10A of their municipal code, which has been in force since 1985, states that exceptions can be made for the discharge of slingshots, flippers, target bows, hunting bows, and crossbows on real property owned by the party discharging the weapons, provided the projectiles discharged from the weapons remain upon the property which is owned by the party discharging the weapon or as to which the party discharging the weapon has the right possession. They make good strides in addressing the needed safety concerns by ensuring that projectiles remain on the owner's property. In the last five years, there's only been one recorded violation of this ordinance, according to Adam Ellison and management at the American Fork Police Department. This serves as a reassuring example of the safety of such an ordinance. Other nearby cities such as Orem, Cedar City, or excuse me, Cedar Hills, and even cities in other states such as Boise, Idaho, have similar ordinances in place while considering the safety of their respective residents. I would suggest that we build on this to further address safety requirements, such as limiting projectile speeds through draw weight, or listing appropriate target requirements as examples. In conclusion, I believe that by clarifying existing municipal code, we can allow for more individual freedoms to our residents on their own personal property while preserving a vital balance between a love for the outdoors and the safety of our residents.
Just so that you're aware, and I don't know that I replied to you, but I, I did forge your suggestion onto our city attorney, our chief of police, and our parks and rec director. They kind of are the ones that would be most directly associated with. And they're, they're going to give us some opinions on this. And then if we want to make a change, what we'll do is they'll contact you to have a discussion. And something will come forward in a more formal method to discuss it.
Great. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Eric.
Okay, anyone else?
Clear the room, quick.
Mike Smith. You got it. I just, last Tuesday-
Lyndon?
The streets are just as bad there. Last, last Tuesday, I got a call, probably the worst call I've had, you know, I say this without getting emotional, from our fire chief about, about noon. And told me that my daughter, my 19-year-old daughter had been involved in an accident here in Pleasant Grove. And I happened to be in Pace in an emergency management meeting at Pace and PD, so I was further away than I wanted to be. And he told me that she, they needed to extricate her out of the vehicle. It was a pretty bad accident. But the reason I bring this up, and I think some of you have heard me say this before, I've worked for this city for 23, almost 24 years. And when I first started here, our fire department and our ambulance service did a great job. They were great people. But they did not possess the level of training and skill that our current department has. And to the point where, you know, that everybody here, I don't believe anybody was a paramedic, and everybody was a volunteer who had a real job somewhere. But it was to the point, as a police officer, we didn't have confidence in our service. And there was a, there was a, just kind of an unwritten rule with the officers. If I get injured in the line of duty, get me in your car and get me to a hospital. Don't leave me laying here for these guys. And I just, I want you to know how grateful I am to have a city that has the level of experience and expertise that Pleasant Grove has, to get that call and have my heart drop out of my chest, but know that no matter what, she was in the best hands that she could possibly be in. And so I just wanted to thank the mayor and council for having a full-time fire and ambulance service, and thank my, my fire chief and my fire service for what they did. So thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the council?
If there's some people in the hall, could I pull some more chairs in?
Yeah, there's actually a couple of seats here. If you have a seat next to you, can you raise your hand? We have like five, five or six chairs here. If you want to come in and have a seat. All right. Anyone else want to address the council? You got more seats there on the back.
Hi, I'm Jeannie Holdaway, and I apologize if things have already been addressed. I got here as quick as I could. It's very difficult to get to a city council meeting when you work. But I just wanted to express my concern over the five-story proposed building on Main Street and how very, very disappointed I am to hear that all but one of our city council people voted to allow the five-story building. I really thought that people had more common sense than that, and that when we have a one-block-wide historic district and put in a five-story building in there, it does not make one bit of sense. And I, I've just been so disappointed to hear about that. I didn't know that that was even in the works. It, it almost sounds like perhaps we were bought out. I don't know. I need more information. But when we heard about it at the Historic Preservation Committee and the, and what was being proposed and already approved without people in the community knowing anything about that, we all on the committee were outraged at it. And it, and we made us all wonder whether the Historic Preservation Committee means anything, if we have any importance, or if we're just to document things before they get torn down and call it good. So thank you, Sid, for sticking up for the preservation of our historic district. And I hope everybody else will do the same and take into consideration what we have and what can be lost in a blink of an eye. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? All right, we're going to go ahead and close the open session then. Let's move on to the consent items.
Mayor, can I, can, when, hi, when we have an agenda item like that that affects the historical downtown, can we include not only the downtown advisory board, but also the historical preservation committee on an email that would notice them? So I know we have the designated notices that are legally required to go out, but could we also include the downtown, like I said, advisory board and historical committee on that notice so they can be involved and participate, whether it's an open session or just give feedback to us before the council meeting happens regarding their thoughts on changes to the historical downtown?
Thank you. Okay, we're going to go ahead and move to the consent items. Are there any items that you wanted to discuss? Okay, seeing none, I'll call for a motion.
Mayor, make a motion to approve the consent items.
Second.
We have a motion by Eric, a second by Sid. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Okay. And now let's go to presentations. And Director Rich, did I pronounce that right? Okay. Sheri's going to make a presentation. I know. Thank you.
For a minute, I thought, where are you going, Sheri? But never mind. I get it.
Sheri's not going anywhere.
This is Diane Marsh. And she has been working at the library for almost 21 years. And many of you know her from storytimes your kids attended over the years. And a lot of people associate her as the library. I've talked to people that, oh, you mean the, the white-haired lady? It's always the white-haired lady that, that people bring up when I talk about the library. She has made a huge difference to our community, and I wanted to recognize her for that. And I did order a plaque, but it's not here yet, so she'll get that later. But, but she can have some flowers now.
Want to say a few words?
This makes it all too real to not be working there anymore. But I, I just want to say it's been a joy and a pleasure to work with the children of Pleasant Grove and many generations of the same families. And, and it's just been my pleasure, and I will miss it. But I'm still living in Pleasant Grove, so.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, we're going to move to item 9A. These are public hearing items. Continued public hearing to consider for adoption in ordinance 2017-21, amending the Pleasant Grove City General Plan land use map for 1.67 acres located at 1783 West, 1100 North, from the land use designation of medium-density residential to professional mixed use and providing for an effective date. Ken?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We had this item up previously with some incorrect noticing, and so that's why it was continued. But this item has been heard recently by the planning commission. So again, what we have is this item and the next item are both related. So what we're trying to do, or what the applicant is requesting to have done, is that we prepare this acreage to be able to be developed for a senior assisted living facility. They're proposing a 91-unit facility. We are not looking at their site plan tonight. Just for your information, what is being looked at into the future. It is a, proposed to be a one-story building that should have fairly low impact on the property. So I'll just get to the request here. In order to rezone the full property that they're looking at rezoning or requesting to rezone, there is one small portion of it that needs to have a general plan amendment. And I'll show you what we're doing. So currently, this is a general plan map. The, as you can see, the acreage that is within the proposed development area is, is in red, outlined in red here. Most of it, except for this eastern piece, is currently general planned in the professional office/mixed-use land use area. So that dark blue land use area does permit a professional office zoning to be done on that property. There are some residences on these properties, as well as in, and through here outside of the development area. They are existing residences. Some of them are zoned residential, but that, the entire area has been master-planned for professional offices. So this one portion here, 1.67 acres, is outside of that master-planned area. But it is, like the others, adjacent to it, largely undeveloped, and has much greater development potential. And so they are requesting that this piece be included in the area that would provide for this opportunity. So I'm, I'm going to kind of handle these, the discussion on these together, if I may, because they do relate to each other. So looking at the next zoning map, this is what those properties are currently zoned. Even though we have these in through here that are currently in the general plan area for the PO zone, which is right here, these properties have not yet been rezoned to be that zoning. But the request now is that these properties that are provided for be rezoned to the PO zone, as well as this additional piece, which if we approve the general plan amendment, would allow that additional piece to the east to be included in that zoning as well. Now, I'm sure you're all familiar with the, what's going on in that general area. But across the street on North County Boulevard, across the street on 1100 North, you have medical facilities, professional offices, all within the vicinity of the- medical facilities, professional offices, all within the vicinity of the American Fork Hospital. So, both American Fork and Pleasant Grove have looked at this area as being a future development, if it's not already developed, future development area of additional professional offices and medical services. So that's, that's kind of how it's been. As long as I have been here, it's almost 11 years, that general plan designation has been on those properties. So, we're not asking for a general plan amendment on those, the major portion of that development area, just on that one piece. So, again, in order to do any rezone, at least on that one piece, we need to amend the general plan to include it in that professional office mixed-use land use area. So, that's the general plan. Is there?
Any questions for Ken? So, Ken, can you go forward one map? I might have missed this in the discussion. Why is the piece on the corner in yellow? Yes?
It, it's just a holdover of zoning. It hasn't been developed or rezoned to be a professional office. But the anticipation of the general plan is that entire block area would be.
So tonight, we're just considering the 1.6 that's all the way to the east?
Right, just this development area right here.
Okay. The first piece is, the first piece is where the O is, where the PO is.
Right, so the piece that needs to be general plan amended is just this one. Then there are three others right here.
This here is.
Would be the entire development area is being proposed.
Okay. And when do we address this piece?
Whenever the property owner requests us to change it.
Okay, so we had a request.
Right. If, if the city determines there's a strong health, safety, welfare need for changing the zone, we can initiate that zone change. We have not done so, but normally, unless the city feels a need, we just let the, the existing zoning stand and then if the property owner wants to develop it, they can request that zone change.
So, not to be controversial, but aren't we creating an island?
Well, in a manner of speaking, I suppose so, but there, there's nothing, okay, so spot zoning is a term that has been used previously as an illegal situation. It is not an illegal thing, but we're creating a situation which follows our general plan. We're not creating zoning that wasn't anticipated.
Any comment? If you have a public comment, we need to wait until the public hearing. Just give us a minute, we'll call on you. Yes, just a minute, okay? Hang on a sec. Tina, did you want to address anything to do with the spot zoning? Is that?
No, Ken's, Ken's accurately represented the, the fact that spot zoning is no longer illegal. It used to be.
Oh, okay.
So.
Thank you.
So, right now, everything in yellow.
Can you use your microphone?
Thank you. So, everything in yellow right now is R18?
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions for Ken at this point?
Ken, maybe you can address what the professional mix means far as height and everything.
Well, I'd, I'd have to pull out the code to see that, but I, I believe it allows up to 40 feet on that, but it doesn't go any higher than that. But I do know that the plans that have been proposed are just one-story, so it'd be well below that. You have homes in the area that can go up to 35 feet, so it's not going to be as far as height is concerned, out of nature with what's going on in the area.
Talk to me about Planning Commission, this went before them.
Yes.
Concerns, anything?
There were several concerns that were brought up from the public, so I'm, I'm seeing some familiar faces that were at that hearing and you'll probably hear many of them speaking here again tonight. The, the Planning Commission heard and listened to all of those situations, the, or, excuse me, comments, but what it really boils down to is what have we already planned for in our general plan? What have we anticipated the zoning to be? The only one that is out of, out of what we would have planned for is that one small piece on the east. We have not general planned that to be professional offices. However, it is adjacent to a lot of other properties that are, and it might make sense to include that in that development area since that is a developable property. If however, we chose to not general plan amend that one property, the, the rest of the property would be available to be rezoned. I might also mention that specifically, as what is currently permitted in our R18 zone, senior assisted living facilities are permitted in the R18 zone. Because of the size and nature of this facility, because of its potential, as earlier suggested by the developers, that they might like to include various types of senior assistants, medical levels, nursing type things, we felt it would be appropriate to have the zone change, or have it changed, which would give additional public hearing process. But should, should this not be approved, I don't think we have any ground to still deny this type of facility, because it is permitted in either the current zone or in the new zone that we're proposing.
So, they would propose a single-story, 91-room facility and that can?
91 beds, so it's not.
91 bed?
Yeah.
Okay, we're not taking any yelling from the audience or speaking out at this point. When we get to the public hearing, then you can come up to the microphone and state your name.
Let me just emphasize, since we did have that type of question come up, this is not a, a site plan review. We do not have details or even answers for all of the details on this proposal. We do not have answers for exactly where the access will be. We do not have answers as to how many employees. We do not have those type of answers right now. All we're doing is rezoning the property to allow for the submittal of a site plan that we will then review and bring forward for review and approval.
All right, so just for our benefit again, the first ordinance is dealing with the general plan and it's, it's changing, it's changing this piece here to?
Professional mixed.
Being, being able to be professional, sorry, medium-density residential, mixed use. And then the second ordinance that you addressed was to change the designation of all of this, including what we just included in the general plan, from R18 to professional office, right?
That's correct.
So all we're doing tonight is addressing change of land use designation.
That's correct.
All right. No site plans, no specific business, nothing like that?
No.
Okay. Any other questions for Ken?
It looks like, Ken, from the staff report, that the voting on both of these issues was unanimous.
It was, yes.
From the Planning Commission?
Yes.
Okay.
There were, and I might mention with that, there was acknowledgement of the concerns, but I think the comments that they made prior to the vote was, we're, we're basically already headed in that direction. It's difficult unless we come up with any real unmitigatable concerns to say no to this.
Right. All right, we're gonna, we're gonna open it up to the public. If you want to stay right there, Ken, so that we can field any questions.
Sure.
And then this, this lady back here that was going to address the designation or the property, if you want to get up and help us with that, just tell us your name.
I'm Carrie Hammond. I'm at 1877 West, 1100 North. And again, I just want to point out, there's a pointer here, right?
Yes. There you go.
The purple is not, this is not accurate, still, from the planning meeting to now, it's not. Our property is right there and it is supposed to be yellow.
Do you live there or is it empty?
What?
Do you live there?
Yes.
Okay.
This, this is the zoning map that has been approved. Now, it could, it, just the fact that a home exists in a zone that is not consistent with what the home is, does not mean that that zoning designation is not on the property. I can't answer why the zoning is shown on her property when she has a home that's there at some previous point that was approved and if it's a map error, I can do some research on that, but this is what we have had on our zoning map for many, many years.
Okay. So, ma'am, are you, are you saying that because you live there and have for some time, that it's, it's your opinion or thought that that is an R18 zone?
Not my opinion or thought, that's how it's listed at the county recorder's office.
Okay. Do you want to? Okay, so he will look into that. Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Yeah.
Okay. Anyone else want to address this item? Please come up and state your name.
I'm Evan Durphy. I live on 1792 West, 1100 North. I have a real concern about giving approval for land when we haven't determined how it's going to be used. How many cars are going to be coming in and out? How many, what are going to be the accesses to in the property? How can you make a decision on the use of property unless those items have been discussed and approved before the land can ever be approved? Also, the land that's been approved, 1783, 1807, 1841, and 1855, we're asking to get approval to, to change the, from residential to commercial. Well, they're already empty, so it's a slam dunk. Somebody's already decided that the commercial's going to be made. And because those homes are empty, the grass is two feet tall, and those of us that try to keep our property looking good, it's a mess. And I can just imagine what's going to happen when 200 cars are coming in and out on that property. There's 100 children within that with residential areas, just to the east of there and the north of there, all those residential areas. There's a school spa, bus that stops on about 1800 West, twice, twice a day, a school bus stops there and with the density of the traffic, I see some real problems that exist and I hope we approach this cautiously.
Sir? Excuse me, sir? If you want to just remain there for a second. Are you, are you objecting to the, to the yet-to-be-proposed use that's going to be on there, or are you objecting to the rezone?
Both. Right now, the rezone. How can we rezone them when you're not going to know how it's going to be used? You know? How can you have 200 cars coming in and out of there? If we know that now, I don't think we'd ever give approval. So I think how the property's going to be used and how it's going to be determined, where the access is going to come? Are they going to come out on 1100 North? How are we going to control the traffic in that area?
Those concerns that you're addressing now have to do with a site plan?
Yes.
And that's when somebody comes in and says, I want to develop this land and here's what I want to physically put on it? And then they need to submit a plan that addresses all of those kinds of concerns. Right now, the best example I can give you would be, say, there's a farmer and he has 50 acres of land that he's been farming, he wants to keep it in greenbelt. One day, he finds out his kids doesn't want to do, don't, don't want to work the farm anymore, so he wants to develop it. A developer comes in, wants to buy it. One of the first steps is, before they can go ahead and buy the farm and turn it into homes, he needs to get it rezoned from agriculture to residential of some type. So that's the first step in the process. And I believe that's what we're addressing here. Someone is seeing these empty lots and they want to go ahead and request to have it changed into this professional office designation. That is when somebody can actually invest. So it'd be the same as if you owned a farm and you wanted to sell it because you're not going to run it anymore. Somebody, you're going to come in, you're going to make the request to make the change so that the person who wants to develop it is entitled now to make, to pay you and go ahead and build what he wants. He still has to come in with a site plan. So it's kind of a two-step process and just because you rezone something, doesn't mean you've approved a site plan. Does that help?
It does, but isn't it logical that one will follow the other just automatically?
It may seem that way, but we have seen in our own city where that's not the case. The council, years before, have designated whole areas as certain types of uses and as the city has grown and developed, those uses have changed. And entire sections of area have modified with the growth of the city. And that's why you have areas now where there can be business growing, or there can be homes, or there can be a mixed use. And that's how, how a city develops over time. So right now, it's not a slam dunk that this particular applicant is going to be approved with something. They need to come forward and present the plan as to what they're going to develop if and when this property is approved for this change in zone.
All right, but there's still a concern about those four empty homes. They, they're sitting in a residential area and I, I don't know that that should be changed. And, but if it isn't changed, somebody's got to take responsibility for the property. We have a code in the city to keep our properties looking halfway decent.
Right.
And I try to keep my property looking decent because I have pride in Pleasant Grove.
Right.
I'd expect those four homes across the street to have a little pride in their, that property as well.
And apparently, that's not happening.
That's not happening.
Now, are they in this yellow area that we were looking at?
On 1100 North.
And what?
Well.
I, I think what he's saying is, these are the properties that right now, if the, the development happens, I'm assuming these properties are going to be torn down.
Yeah.
Are they the ones that have the empty homes?
The four empty homes.
Okay. Thank you very much, appreciate it. Anyone else?
Yes, my name is Mario Felix. I live on 1124 North, 1730 West. That is, sorry, right there.
Okay.
Evan Durphy, who you just spoke with, lives right there.
Okay. Thank you.
I appreciate, Mayor, you giving us that example, because this is not what's happened. The example you've given is, a farmer has land, gives it to his children, his children no longer want to farm, and before he sells it, he needs to get it rezoned so that it can be used for residential or commercial, whatever.
Exactly.
In this particular case, the homes that are in those properties, those lines in essence, were allowed to market themselves as commercial property. They did not get a rezoning before they sold. The sellers got together and decided that they would say this is commercial land. Now, that may be in line with the anticipated plan, master plan, but an anticipated master plan is not an actual zone. It was very carefully worded, is it Jim or Ken?
Ken.
Ken's right there.
Ken?
It was very carefully worded by Ken in the first diagram that the master plan demonstrate that just a little sliver of land is what, is what's needed to move forward, when in fact, in this diagram, it's clear that the entire area is an R1 through 8, right? I, I don't know if you went to law school, but you did a really good job presenting that so that it's confusing. You're welcome. I, I didn't go to law school, but I caught on quite quickly. So, in your example, Mayor, that is not taking place here. The land has been marketed and has been signed as commercial, when in fact, it's not. The buyer who purchased it went in with that mentality, I am buying this residential land. Maybe he didn't know, and if he didn't know, that's his problem. That is not the city's problem, it's not the neighbor's problem. And he went in and he purchased land that maybe he thought was commercial. Now, we're going through, it's almost like we skipped a step and we're having to backtrack and make it all legal by following a master plan that doesn't really matter here, because the zone demonstrates to us that the master plan has no bearing on anticipated use. At what point did Pleasant Grove decide that we were going to mirror American Fork? The only reason that surgical center in American Fork exists is because they didn't have to tell Pleasant Grove residents that they wanted to build it right there. I live three houses away from that building. They didn't have to say a word to me. Why? Because it's American Fork. They built another medical facility, straight up this road. Massive building, four stories. It is towering over four homes. What did Pleasant Grove do about it? Nothing. Why? Because it's American Fork land. Are we going to continue making the same kinds of decisions that American Fork would make towards us? From our own city is what I'd like you to keep in mind.
Okay. Thank you. Go ahead, Ken.
So I think it's fairly clear that I did not attend law school. But let me be clear, if I haven't been so far, my language was not intended at all to be deceptive and I think I did make myself clear on one point, which is, without this zoning, this facility could still be built. And so what I was trying to make clear is that we were trying to provide an additional opportunity for the public to be involved by rezoning it, which would make it perhaps a more appropriate zone for that type of facility, which otherwise, through conditional use permit, can be permitted in the R18 zone. And nobody would be here tonight unless we were, well, we'd be at the Planning Commission for a conditional use permit. And that would be along with the site plan. It wouldn't have anything to do with zoning. So, I'm sorry if my language. So I'm sorry if my language wasn't clear, but it was definitely not intended to be deceptive.
Okay. Would anyone else like to address this issue? Go ahead.
My name is Alan Michaelis. I live in Pleasant Grove. We are, we're right, right there. And my, my main concern with all of this development is, right now, our road just ends right there, and, and we like that a lot. It's nice not having, not having any through traffic or anything else happen along the road. So with, you know, with this, whatever, I'd just like to see us not develop what is, what is right in here. I'd like to see our road just continue to, to end right there. I don't think there's any reason, whether these are residents, whatever they are, that the road needs to go through. Let's just cap us off right there and let us...
There is a sure way to guarantee that happens.
What's that?
Buy it.
Is it for sale?
It, it's up to you. If you buy it, then you can control whether that road goes through or not.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yes. So since we have many interested parties here tonight, it is not on the agenda for this project, but that is something that's listed on the rap sheet that has previously been approved, is coming forward to the planning commission for reapproval, which is the Welcome Home Assisted Living Center on this property. So we have two assisted living centers that are coming in. As I said, this has already been approved. It went through the notification process, received a conditional use permit, was approved, and then they did not build. So their approval expired. So they're going back through the process to get reapproval for that. But because there is road, planned roadway to connect through here and also straight down through here, the land has been provided for those roads that will be required, and these two facilities will share in the construction of those road connections. So I'm not sure there's any way around that at this point.
Thank you. Anyone else want to address these two ordinances? Go ahead.
My name is Mike Adamson. I'm a 22-year resident at Pleasant Grove, and appreciate the opportunity to take just a few minutes. I live at 1769 West, 920 North. 920 is one of the roads, it sounds like now, is anticipated use. And I'm going to be sandwiched right in between two rest home facilities right now. My question, do you find folks...
I'm sorry, can you point that out on the map for us?
Okay, I'm, is my pointer right here?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm at 1769 right there. I'm the backdoor neighbor to the Michaelises here, so the road would be going through there, and maybe we can get a whole bunch of us to buy a few lots here in the next few days.
Yes.
But if we're not able to, can I please ask the city to respectfully consider a couple of things? I know we're doing zoning tonight, but anticipated use also needs to take a look at the site plan that you're talking about, okay? So if you're going to be coming in here, you, you have to understand, we have to deal with health, safety, and welfare for the residents as well, too. That's part of a site plan. Let me just share with you, I have an autistic child who's severely autistic, and I'm concerned about the traffic going through there. Now, I know that there may or may not be the possibility that my family or others could shut down a road in that particular area, but health, safety, and welfare not only needs to be a big priority for my home, but I also have two autistic children who live next door. So let me present that as part one for health, safety, and welfare. For those children, they're not going to be cognizant of the traffic that's going through there. A traffic study would be very, very helpful. My understanding is, is that the city has already decided that our road on 920 is going to connect to North County Boulevard. So if that's the case, going out here and having the through road come through, you're going to increase even more traffic. That is danger, not only to me and to my family. The other thing I would say is that reflects on tonight's issue as well, too, with Carrie Hammond and her family and others that are here as well, too. If you're going to continue to build around these homes, you have created the island that you've brought up, Mayor, and that is particularly, you're going to have only three or four or five homes right in there that are surrounded by commercial facilities. What does that do to those families? Has that been considered as part of this particular zoning plan? It, it really doesn't make sense. And so you're building on both sides, just tucking those families in, and again, I would ask you to considerably look at that, that particular plan.
And are there homes here being occupied, people living there?
So there's actually three on the west side.
So here, here, and here?
Yeah.
What's here?
Alpine, yeah.
So it's not a, it's not a residential. And, and I'm assuming that from the prior presentation, there were three or four homes that are not being occupied on those properties? Not being cared for? Okay. But nobody lives there? Okay.
So I'll just add my last piece. If this is all about zoning tonight, I will stand up and object to that particular issue for the very fact that you're going to enclose those families in.
Good. Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else want to address the, the subject?
I'm probably going to bring up some stuff.
Go ahead and state your name again.
Oh, Carrie Hammond, 1877 West 1100 North. We moved into the property where we live now, I thought I have this turned off, sorry, in 2008. Prior to that, it was my husband's grandparents' home that they occupied since 1968. So they also have shared the well with the Jeffersons' property at 1855. So my well access is actually on the other side of the property line. It's my sole source of water.
Where, where is that?
So that's my property right there, and my well access is right there.
On the other side of the property?
We share a driveway right now, so, or the stem as it is now, because there's a, a long history with this property. Arnold Haskell owned all of this for Alpine Pediatrics. He sold off, he parceled that off and sold it off, along with those that he sold to his other children. So these are my family, and this is us. Several years back, he actually deeded to Pleasant Grove City property that was to be used for an access road over to 930 North, which Pleasant Grove City then allowed Alpine Pediatrics to build their building on. So there was no access road out to 930 North. So with this development coming in here, right, literally in my front yard, and with my well on the other side, my concerns are with total transparency through this entire process, because I already have seen what can happen and how things can go badly, badly wrong for the homeowners here. So those are my big concerns. I expect to have total transparency. This thing is right in my front yard. I need to have water coming from somewhere, preferably my well. I currently pay a whole bunch of money for secondary water like everybody else, but we have no access to it. Can't use it. Don't want it. So I have a great many concerns about this, and, and also with the accuracy of this map, as I've stated. So I would just suggest that moving forward, that the council, the planning commission, everybody that's going to be involved with this project, really make a concerted effort for transparency and to take the needs and considerations of the residents who live here into consideration, because everyone can't afford it. I don't want to move. I'm probably going to have to at some point, but I am not in a situation to do so at this point in time.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you, Carrie.
Thanks.
Anyone else?
Good evening. I was thinking about a shot clock being the basketball game. My name is Jim Lewis. I live at 1702 West, 870 North.
Can you point that out for us?
I pulled this up a little bit. So there's 870 North. I'm the corner property right there. So a couple of questions I have might be, well, one, that was a great definition of transparency, which is part of the key part of trust. You know, do we trust each other? How fast can we do this? Or if we don't trust each other, how slow is this going to go? A question I have might be towards Scott on the property valuations, as was pointed out here, would be sandwiched in with all sorts of, was it assisted living? Right? So would our property valuations go down? Would they go up? Would they stay stagnant?
We wouldn't know the answer to that. The county is the one who does the property valuations.
Okay.
So we, we don't, we don't deal with that.
Yeah, that, that would be one of, you know, we all don't want to have our properties dwindle and become unsellable, right? The other part is the road here where I'm on 870 residential. There's 12 homes. There's 30 kids, various ages. It is a more narrow road compared to 800, which already goes all the way through. Mount Mahogany is over this side, elementary. So this road is much wider. This road here already goes through. It's wider. Where I'm at here is a more narrow road, so now you bring, you already have two cars parked on either side of the road, right? And then you have two cars trying to drive through there with kids. I think that road is not conducive to having a lot of traffic come through that area when they would have to make a concerted effort to go in a roundabout way around here. Very valid about autistic children here. So as you can tell, there's a, a lot of concerns that we have, and we just want to have open dialogue discussion, which I believe this is the forum that we're having, that it'll continue to go on. And I'm now thinking, what else can I say in about 35 seconds?
Go Jazz.
Yeah, yeah, there you go. We'll, we'll, we'll end with that. Any questions that you have for me while I'm up here, and I've got 24 seconds?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate it, council.
Hey, anyone else want to address this subject? Go ahead.
Trent Lim. I live on 1700 West to 93 North. I'm the corner house right there. So I, as I was walking in, I read this nice board that says Pleasant Grove is interested in preserving, help me out there, preserving the quality neighborhoods. We have a quality neighborhood. We do. We know every one of the people that lives there, that kind of did a nice shady deal there. We know our neighbors that live there. We know the neighbors that live all the way here. We have a nice neighborhood. We don't need it parceled up. We don't need it to go commercial. As he pointed out, an assisted living home can go there anyways. So be it. We don't need to parcel off the rest. They don't need that to do what they're already going to do. We'd rather shut the door on the rest. We don't need to open the door for it. We already have a nice, quality neighborhood that I think we're all here to vote we'd like to maintain.
Ken, the parcels that we're talking about, are they all under one ownership now?
Before I answer that, I believe we have the owner's representative, or the, not the owners, the developer representative is, are they here tonight? Okay, that's unfortunate. They, it's my understanding that, yes, they've all been purchased by the same development company that wants to do this project.
So they, they own, one company owns all four of those parcels?
Yes. So, and, and if I can be clear, we, we do have these two homes that are up here, and we've got this other one that's tucked in, and we'll check on the zoning there. But otherwise, this is all professional offices in here. This is a proposed assisted living center as well as that. So, so there's really not, in my view, going to be any sandwiching here. You're going to have a wall of uses, and, and that happens all over the community. There's always a boundary between zones. So you've got some that kind of is going like this, or even, even all this is kind of tucking around, but, but the thing is, ultimately, what you're going to end up with is not a straight line, but still a line between residential and commercial.
Ken, isn't there two existing homes already right here that they, they must have already bought then?
Yes. Those are the homes we've talked about that are vacant.
Okay. Thank you, Ken. Would anyone else like to address this item? You can step up to the microphone.
Since the developer is not represented this evening, can we have a name and a, and a contact for them?
What's on our paper here is Greg Larson is the applicant, and we don't have any contact on this, but I think Ken can provide that to you. Okay. Let's, let's go ahead and close the public hearing on this and bring it back up here.
I'd like to say something if I could.
Okay, please, go ahead.
My name is Shannon Felix. I've lived here for 36 years. I'm not that old, though. I have four boys, and we live, I don't know how to work magic things.
Push the little button on the end.
He'll show you where I live. I just lost my train of thought. So I would just like to say, just putting a road through a neighborhood is risky. It's dangerous. Do we need businesses that badly? I mean, yeah, we do. We need businesses, but enough that we're going to compromise the neighborhood? You tell me.
Okay. Thank you. So let's clarify what our role is here. Anybody who owns property has the right to come in and make the request to develop their property, and as long as they are meeting what the code says for the use of that property, they have that right. Now, whether their site plan gets approved or not, they not, they must take into consideration the things that the, the city is going to impose upon them as far as the safety and, and layout and traffic patterns and all of that. So that's, that's a given. That has to take place. The zoning itself, it's a little slightly different issue here. Somebody owns that property, and so they kind of have a right to come in and make that request. The council is bound to obey the law. So we kind of have to look at this from land use law, and we get advice from the attorney and whatnot on helping us with that. So please understand that we're sensitive to the things that you've, you've stated and your concerns, and we're going to have to weigh that, but we're going to have to follow the law, whatever the law says on this matter. All right. So let's bring it back up here. Council, do you have discussion? The first item is the general planned use map for this 1.67 acres.
I've got some questions, if I may, Mayor.
Please.
It's unfortunate our applicant isn't here. One of the things you said a couple of times, Ken, was that this project could be done anyway, under the existing zoning. And, and I'm hesitant to make a change if we don't need a change. Well, I guess I'm trying to understand a little better why we would even...
Can you speak in your microphone, please?
Trying to understand a little better why we are undertaking this endeavor if it's not necessary.
Well, as I did mention, we felt that the, the mere size of the facility and the potential uses that were once initially proposed by the applicant when they came forward to DRC, so I, maybe I can back up in a comment there. We have had a conceptual development review of this project already. It was just the concept plan, but it was there at that meeting that it was suggested by staff that they seek a general plan amendment and a zone change. Even though the current zoning allows for it, the mere size of the facility and the proposed uses that they did propose at that time were more than just senior assisted living. There were some additional nursing and health-type uses that they were proposing. Since that time, they have indicated to staff that they most likely will not go forward with those other medical-type uses, that they will just be doing a senior assisted living. But at this point in time, since we have not yet received a submittal for the site plan, it has not yet been approved, we don't really know what they're actually going to end up requesting to be approved. So we, it was our recommendation that the, the use of this facility and its potential uses, as they might propose, better fit the professional office zone, and that it would give an opportunity, as we are having right now... give an opportunity, as we are having right now, to bring this forward to the, the public in addition to when we invite them to come to a site plan review. So it was trying to be more transparent, as everybody likes, and get more information out. That was the real purpose.
Thank you, Ken.
And if I could follow up with that question, the additional features, the additional details that were originally proposed in the concept phase, but have been not as highly reflective of interest at this point, are those possible under either zoning?
No, only under the professional office zoning.
So if we decline this zone change, they would be forced to stick with the plan that is the more recent articulation of their vision?
Well, we're not even here to discuss a site plan tonight. What we're here to discuss is whether it gets rezoned or not and the general plan gets amended. They still have to come back no matter what it is, whether it remains R18 or it goes to the commercial use, sorry, professional office use, they still have to come back and submit something. And if it fits whatever the uses that are allowed on that, whatever zone it is, they have the right to apply for that. So at this point, I don't see where the use itself is going to dictate the, the approval or not. I mean, we're, we're being asked to approve a, the, the owner of the land has requested a zone change.
Right, and the zones dictate a, a litany of available uses.
Right. That's exactly right.
Every resident here that's been noticed with this zone change would get a subsequent notice for the site plan approval?
Yes.
Do we have concerns about this, the island of, I mean, is, do we have legal concerns? Maybe this is a question for Tina more than anyone, but there was talk of creating islands in that corner, the northwest corner, I suppose it would be. Is this legally permissible?
So, so the difference is, and it's a little bit of a subtle difference, while it's not shown on this map, it's shown on the other map, the general land use category for that area is designed to be the professional office mixed use, which includes that corner. Currently, the people who own that corner have not come in and asked for a rezone from the existing zone to the professional office. But our general land use map, by coloring it purple and designating its future use as professional office slash mixed use, we have already declared, the city's already declared its vision for that area and that in the future, it's intended to be those uses. We don't mandate that property owners necessarily change the zone to match the general land use map, but when they do want to change the zone, it's a requirement that what they want to change it to matches the general land use map that we've already adopted, which is basically our vision for the future uses of that area. Does that help, make sense? Okay.
Thanks.
May I also point out on the zoning, this does involve four different properties in that L-shaped corner. This one, I believe actually these two that front on North County Boulevard have been advertised for some time for sale for a commercial use.
Which two again? The two that are on the left?
The ones that front on North County Boulevard. Perhaps it's just the one on the corner, but I know I have seen a sign there for sale for commercial use.
Okay. Thanks, Ken. All right. Are there, are there any other discussion points on this?
Well, yeah, I'll just make a few comments. Thank you to the residents that live in that area for coming out and, and speaking and defending your neighborhood. And it's a, a general plan, we talk about visioning, right? And, and long-term visioning. But sometimes we notice that changes, right? Because neighbors speak up. And so right now, I'm, I'm inclined just to, right now, my thinking is just to keep it the way it is, so.
Do you want to make a motion?
No, that's just, I want to give everyone else a...
Okay. Anyone else?
I am tending to agree with Eric.
Okay.
And I, the open session with the car dealership on 30th, I think I'm honoring the neighborhood as well.
Okay. Anyone else?
I agree. What, what looks good on paper for an anticipated general plan isn't always what's best for the neighborhood and that area and the residents. And I would agree, this, I don't think it's needed, I don't think it's a, anything that would, is necessary, so I agree with keeping it as is at this time.
Anyone else?
I'm good with it as it is.
Everyone's chimed in. Ben, do you have an opinion?
Well, and I, yeah, I articulated at first that I didn't think this was necessary and that the project can be done that way. It does seem like we're solving something that doesn't have a problem.
Okay.
And so I guess...
Sorry.
And if I, yeah, and then to further elaborate, I guess I do have concerns when we have our maps that have issues of questions with the maps. I'd like to have us do a little research on those and I'd like to make sure that we are transparent and thorough in our process. So yeah, I'm inclined to say let's, let's decline.
And I am concerned because of the two lots that have homes in them that are being cared for and they live in it. And we would be zoning right around them, creating an island. Whether that's illegal or not, I think it separates them from the rest of the area. Whatever the people that own the land decide to advertise, that's just deceptive, has nothing to do with the city. You can put anything you want and advertise whatever you want. It may not be true, but it doesn't, it doesn't shine very well on the person doing the advertising.
So I think everybody's pretty much in agreement if we'd like to formalize that.
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we decline the adoption of ordinance 2017-21, so we do not amend the Pleasant Grove City General Plan Land Use Map for 1.67 acres located at 1783 West 1100 North from the land used designation of medium density residential to professional mixed use. So we would not make a change.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to deny from Ben. We have a second to deny from Diana. I'm assuming we vote in the affirmative if we agree with the denial? Okay, by voice, Diana?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Sid?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
It's unanimous, it's denied. What does that do to ordinance 2017-22?
Does that need to be denied as well?
Yes.
Okay, I make the motion that we deny ordinance 2017-22 to rezone 7.53 acres on property located at 1783, 1807, 1841, and 1855 West 1100 North from R1A, single-family residential to professional office.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to deny by Sid and a second by Eric. By voice, Lynn?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Sid?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Diana?
Yes.
It's unanimous, these two are denied. Thank you for coming, we appreciate your input and we'll inform the property owner.
May I just again make the point clear so that no one leaves here thinking it's all settled? The current zoning does provide for an assisted living center. And so I am anticipating a site plan that will be coming in that we will be reviewing and that we will send a public notice out on.
Right. Okay. We're gonna, we've skipped to item 9C. Item 9D is a public hearing to receive comments on, if you want to leave, you can go ahead and leave. We'll pause for a moment.
Thank you.
Congratulations to those that had concerns.
This is a public hearing to receive comments on proposed amendments to the comprehensive fee schedule, adding provisions for inspection fees, engineering fees, construction fees, and fees for working in the city right-of-way. Marty?
While Marty's getting that pulled up, oh, is Ken, did he leave? Oh, he's out there all...
As soon as you're ready, Marty.
Yes, as soon as the computer...
No pressure.
Tip-offs not at 8:30 or anything, Marty, so, you know...
At this point, it is really close. Nobody's hungry here, we've all had a hot dog.
Look at that.
Mayor, counsel, we, kind of looking further at our, some road issues and things that we're dealing with, a few weeks ago, we came back with some inspection fees and recommended that we consider charging development work for the work that we need to do to inspect that work as it's being done on those sites. And, and that was approved and that's one of the items that we're discussing tonight, just including that in the comprehensive fee schedule. Mouse on the right sheet here. The other thing that we needed to discuss is with regards to just street cuts in general. And currently, when somebody comes in, a developer, homeowner, or somebody of that nature, a resident of the city, they need to cut into the street, whether they're building a new home or doing something of that nature. Our process is, we have a street excavation permit that they're required to pull and they essentially have their contractor come in, fill this out, provide a $10,000 surety bond, provide a proof of insurance, and then they're, for the $50, they're able to go and do that work. And again, $50 essentially takes, you know, our time to even just review that and get that through the process. There really is no, I guess, coverage of in, testing and inspection of that work that is being done. And so what we're proposing here is some additional fees that would be applied to a general street excavation permit. If somebody comes in to get a permit, the, these are very common, ours was very low compared to the other ones that we, other cities that we were looking at, generally in the hundred to $150 range, a street, a street excavation permit. And as you can see here, we're proposing to do about $125 for that permit. So, this does not necessarily, the street excavation permit is pulled by developers as well as by the general, you know, a bill, home builder or something is building a new home, they would have to come in and get one of these permits. We all know that, and Sid will appreciate this picture here, that when, when, when cuts happen into the right-of-way, there is a decreased value or a decreased life of that road. And there was a study recently, well, a couple of years, conducted by BYU in Springville City. I've got a whole nice report that shows, they wanted to know what that decreased value was or decreased service life to the road was when somebody cut into a road. And essentially, they, they came up with a decreased pavement condition index of about 22 points for every cut. So essentially, you're dropping that road automatically down from a good road into a, a poor road, if it's in any condition at all. If it's, if it's a good road, it's already dropping it down to a point that they almost need an overlay in the concept of a pavement condition and specifically right around that patch. So there is a significant impact to our road system and many of you have probably driven our roads. A lot of the cuts are due to either the pressurization installation over time or other cuts that have been made into the road, whether that's utility cuts, things of that nature. And so we have a lot of failed pavement areas. And one of the things that we feel is, is fair is that when somebody does come to cut into the road, whether that be a developer or a home builder, that they do pay the city for that work that they're doing within the right-of-way so that we have an opportunity for that decreased service life that that road will now see, to be able to repair and replace that into the future. And, and so this is an example of a, you know, just a cut and you, after a few years, if, you know, it gets water in it, it can settle, you can have issues. And then the city's stuck holding that bill of how do we get that fixed? And really, we have a lot of issues with the roads and, and very little, we all know the situation we're in. We've talked about it for many, many months. This is just one way to help, I guess, cover some of those costs to be able to get in and repair the roads.
So in effect, you're, you're not necessarily only charging for inspection fees, you're charging for the damage that was done to the road that will have to be repaired at some point.
That is correct.
But do you feel, compared to what other communities are charging, that this is a high enough fee to cover those costs?
So we do feel, again, this is very similar to what Provo charges, it's 100, and American Fork, $100 is for the, about a 10 by 10 patch, and then it's $20 for each additional 10 by 10 patch after that. And so we feel like that that's a reasonable charge. Now, what the study came back with is they, they recommended in, based on the age of the road, there were a varying degree of cost. So a new road might cost as much as $4 a square foot because of its increased or decreased service life, whereas an older road might only be a dollar a square foot type of in value. What we felt was fair was that this $100 would apply for every patch, we'll just kind of measure the square footage and that's what would be the cost of that, so.
Okay.
Okay.
And Marty, this doesn't eliminate their obligation to make that patch, right? They still patch, but they pay us for the right to have cut and patched.
That is correct.
We are going to be able to inspect more through the fee system.
That is correct, too. So this would allow us to also have an inspector making sure that we're touching every one of those projects when they do that.
So in addition to a little bit of money towards the future maintenance of the road, we can have someone go out and inspect whether the patch was done correctly and adequately?
That is correct.
Other questions for Marty?
Let me, so that's mainly the asphalt. You can see that...
Just trying to cut you off, that's all.
Sorry, no, I, I didn't go through the rest of these. I think it's fair to do that. But there is a couple of other things that we're recommending other than asphalt patching, directional boring. We typically have contractors in here boring in the right-of-way. Those can cause failures, we see that a lot of time at telephone pedestals or other things like that. We've got some potholing that they have to do for that boring. So there's some other fees that we're recommending there for, in order to kind of recoup some of the costs that we as, as city are experiencing and seeing in order to get these repairs done and, and being able to fund those.
Anything else for Marty? Okay, this is a public hearing, right? So we're going to go ahead and open it up to the public. If there's anyone that would like to comment on this, please come up and state your name. Marty, if you want to hang around there so we can answer questions.
Because tip-offs 8:30, we're going to reduce your time from three minutes to one minute. So just be cognizant of that.
Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Oh, there we go, Niels.
Yeah, someone. Niels Fugel. I'm curious to know if these fees go directly into the pavement fee or does it go into the general fund?
Marty?
So, with the NIS, this would go right back into the street fund and be paid, paid for, for into the street budget, because that's where we pay for all of these items out of currently, is with our street department, so.
Oh, street. Did you have a comment? Okay. I saw movement out of the court in my eyes.
I just sent him an email.
Okay. Sounds good. Would anyone else in the public like to address this item? Okay. We're going to close the public hearing and come back up here. Any further discussion?
No. I just think this is awesome and thank you for taking the time to research what other communities are doing so we can catch up and be on the same plane field with having, you know, whoever comes in and makes these cuts into our roads, that we'll have a new revenue and funding source to help repair those, so, thank you.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion. We don't need one. Oh.
Is it the next one?
The 10A.
Yeah, 10A. Am I okay to go ahead with that?
Okay. Yeah.
I make the motion that we approve Resolution 2017-028, amending the comprehensive fee schedule, adding provisions for inspection fees, engineering means construction fees, and fees for working in the city right-of-way.
Second.
We have a motion by Sid and a second by Lynn. By voice, Diana?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Sid?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
It's unanimous. Okay. We're going to move to item 10B to consider for approval a two-lot final plat called 100 South Church Subdivision on property located at approximately 1650 West, 100 South in the Grove Mixed Housing Subdistrict Zone. I should mention, we switched from Section 9, which had public hearings in it, to Section 10, which does not.
Ben pushed two on the... Right there.
Ken, can I just ask while you're getting ready, why was the mobile food truck public hearing moved?
We had some additional items that needed to be included with that ordinance that were in a different section, so it needed to be re-noticed. And so, as it was noticed, it needed to be canceled. And now it is now being re-noticed for the 16th. And now it is now being re-noticed for the 16th with the proper language.
And, and the applicants were notified, is that correct?
Okay, we have this final plat of two lots we've been anticipating for quite some time. On the Proctor property, 100 South, right up here, and Proctor Lane, or 1300 West, right here. So the Proctors have sold this portion, the northwest portion of their property, to the LDS Church, who are wanting to build a new facility there. Included on this plat is some road dedication for the beginnings of a roadway that will go along the western boundary, heading south down here, which will eventually connect to those properties that are being developed by Ken Brett Snyder, the Evermore Gardens and such. So that will be in access through that area. So you have two lots, plus a small parcel on the other side of the roadway in the very corner. It's been reviewed and approved preliminarily by the Planning Commission, and we recommend approval for you.
Questions for Ken? I have one for you. The continuation of the road until it reaches the Brett Snyder property, how far are we looking at?
Okay, so the LDS Church will just build this small portion right here. The Smiths have agreed to pick up another portion through here, but will not be continued until they're ready to develop their property. Marty, maybe you can-
There a pointer? Scott, can I say that real quick? So this, this piece here, Mayor, is owned by, I think, Jimmy Smith. This is owned by Stan Smith. So Stan would construct here at the time they developed this piece where the Heehaw Farms is. With Jimmy Smith, I've heard that he may be already looking at potentially extending the road. The Brett Snyder piece probably ends about in this area right here, where the road ends currently, and then Jimmy Smith would extend that up to his property. So there's a potential there between developments, that there might be about 180 feet, if I remember correctly, of unconstructed road through here, until the property develops, but that's currently how it's looking.
Okay, sounds good. All right, any further discussion? We beat this horse to death. All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Make the motion, Mayor, counsel, that we approve a two-lot final plat called 100 South Church Subdivision on property located approximately 1650 West, 100 South, Grove Mixed Housing Subdistrict Zone in Sam White's Lane neighborhood.
I'll second it.
We have a motion by Ben and a second by Diana. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you, and congratulations, Mr. Proctor.
Mayor, if I might, I was caught, just as I was about to sit down at the last item that I was up here for, the developers did show up, and evidently, there was some confusion with them as to what time our meeting started, and I apprised them of what occurred. They have requested that they might just take a moment and make some comments. I said I would ask of you if that was all right.
I'll make the motion, Mayor, that we allow the applicant to speak, or the representative of the applicant to speak.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Hi, Greg Larson, developer of the project. Thanks for letting me speak again. So as of two weeks ago, the plan was to do only assisted living, because we didn't have licenses to do skilled nursing beds. But two weeks ago, we got approached by another company to do skilled nursing beds, and so that may be in our plans to include that on that property.
Is that an approved use for the R18?
No.
So if that's the case, then you'll have to come back and, and go through the process with the Planning Commission and with staff again.
Okay.
Okay? We've already-
I, I know, and I'm late, I'm sorry about that. I just wanted to make you aware of what-
Thank you. Did you want to say anything else?
No, that's it.
Okay, thanks, Greg, appreciate it. All right, let's go to item 10C. This is to consider for adoption a resolution, 2017-029, adopting the Pleasant Grove City tentative budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2017, and ending June 30th, 2018, which includes the Pleasant Grove Redevelopment Agency tentative budget, and the comprehensive fee schedule, and providing for an effective date. Denise?
Hi.
Hi.
I'm not that tall.
When are you leaving for Hawaii?
Sunday.
Oh, okay.
Who's counting? So we were able to get the tentative budget in your packet yesterday. Sorry, I was trying quicker, but just some last-minute changes. Not really changes to the numbers, but as part of the presentation, you do actuals and estimated for FY '17 that we're currently in, so was just still working on those. So I'm just gonna highlight on a couple of pages, and I'll give you the page numbers. Scott's actually going to put those documents up there.
Okay.
And so page two, when you're looking at the tentative budget, is just what we refer to as the one-pager. And on the top of that is what we've been looking at since January, how much new revenue that we have, and then on the right-hand side is what we're gonna use those revenues for. And so it was a couple of weeks ago that the council provided more information, and so this is what we have that we're presenting with the tentative budget. And we did the salaries and wages, and the benefit increases for the employees at 2%. We'd originally asked at 2.5%, so this, it's at 2%. We have the fire retention dollars, that we'll put together a pay table for an advancement for our firefighters. And just a small thing there for legal, with some changes to their budget with the full-time prosecutor. The Public Safety Trust Fund, as we've talked about, that will cover our police and fire, if they are killed during the line of duty, to cover medical for their family. And then we had different positions. Right now, we have a part-time librarian that we funded, and a full-time code enforcement. And the council approved doing the vote by mail, and that was actually originally at $25,000. The county came back with their contract. It'll actually be $28,000 plus the dollars that we already had. And then just, the latest was the transfer to roads of $100,000. So just those changes.
Are the other, are the other amounts identified for roads already included elsewhere?
Yeah, the three, the 324 that we had, yes. It says a transfer out already, too. So if you look on page, I can tell you what that is.
Yeah, that's already in the base budget.
Yeah, that's in the base budget.
That doesn't require council.
What's the total amount now?
424, 620.
That includes this $100,000?
$100,000, yeah, yeah. And that's on page 90, excuse me, nine of the document.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. And then on the bottom half of the one-pager, these were the items that we discussed. So this is the fiscal year 16 excess budget, budget that we had remaining, that we're putting towards capital. So this is our capital presentation that we will be doing in fiscal year 2018. I won't go over all those, I think we've discussed many of those.
When we discuss these, this does not mean that they're going to be built, it means they're approved if we have the funds?
We do have the funds for the 455. This was the remaining for fiscal year 2016, after the audit was completed.
And this is one-time money?
This is one-time money, yes. Yeah, this is separate from our, our new money that we're getting from new revenue in '18. And then, so the other thing that we wanted to just bring up a little bit, is in, on the document, page 31, we just tried to do an average monthly rate comparison, because we are raising a couple of our utility rates, which is culinary and secondary, and sewer. And so overall, for the average homeowner, it'd be 3%, which is approximately $3.75 per month. And so this is just based on an average bill. This may be different than many homeowners, but just trying to reflect what an average bill may go up.
Okay.
So it's a 5% for culinary, 5% for secondary. We're actually doing a 5% for sewer for our rate, but the service district is not raising their rate, so it's to give us a 2% overall. And then the only other thing, we're not gonna put it up on the screen, because I don't think you could read it. Page three in your document, it just gives a consolidated budget for every fund that we have in the city. So we have the governmental funds, the enterprise funds, and then the redevelopment agency. It's just a summary picture of everything that you'd see in the doc, so I just don't, I don't think we could see it, it's too small, but just to let you know that that's there just as a snapshot. And we'll get this on the website as soon as we can, so it's available for the public.
Can I just remind the council, we're required by law to adopt our tentative budget the first meeting in May. This does not mean that things are final, so in this process, there are still things that the council so chooses can change. We will have a public hearing the first Tuesday in June on the, on this budget, and then we will have it on our budget for the third meeting in June for final adoption.
Questions for Denise?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'll entertain a motion.
I'd like to make some comments, if I may, Mayor, before we go on to a motion. I didn't have a question specifically, but I do have some comments. I have some reservations about our tentative budget. I'm grateful to see the movement that our city council has made towards putting $100,000 towards the roads. I think that's the right direction, it's a step in the right direction. I mean, that $100,000 can save by itself, it can save all of our cultural arts, PG Players, Center Stage, Children's Choir, Arts Council, Orchestra, it's enough to, in addition, also save all of our city celebrations and community services, Miss PG, fireworks, Heritage Days, youth court, beautification commission, Arbor Day, and still have enough to save our Christmas lights, tree maintenance, and a big chunk of our greenhouses. It's a big step in the right direction, but it is not enough. Most of the citizens, the vast majority of the citizens, I would say, that are reaching out to me are saying that the low-hanging fruit, and the easiest places to find the money for their highest priority of the roads, is in our new money. And so I would suggest that it's to our advantage to put even more of the new money towards roads. When we're going through our budgeting exercises, having to make cuts in other departments is not something I have ever advocated or encouraged, and it will be a very difficult process for us to pursue, and it would be wiser of us to take some of the low-hanging fruit that is in the new money, and putting that towards the highest priority of the public. So I would recommend that we do that. I'm concerned that we saw an increase in the estimated costs of the vote-by-mail program. It may not be too late to change the position of the council on that issue, and I would think that it would be better to put that money towards the highest priority of the public as well. So for those reasons, I will oppose the tentative budget, and hope that we continue to do the work of the people as we get towards the final budgeting period.
Thank you, Ben. Anyone else? Okay, let's go ahead and have a motion.
Is it C? I'll, I'll make the motion that we adopt resolution, that we adopt the Pleasant Grove City tentative budget.
It is a resolution.
So it is a resolution.
Mm-hmm.
So.
2017-029.
So, I'll start over. I'd like to make the motion that we adopt Resolution 2017-029, adopting the Pleasant Grove City tentative budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2017, and ending June 30th, 2018, which includes the Pleasant Grove Redevelopment Agency tentative budget and the comprehensive fee schedule. Second.
We have a motion by Diana and a second by Sid by voice. Ben?
No, for the reasons stated.
Eric?
Yes.
Sid?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
And Diana?
Yes.
Motion carries four to one. Okay, let's move to item 10D. This is to consider for adoption a resolution, 2017-030, authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with Big D Construction for construction manager, general contractor, CMGC, services for the proposed public safety building facilities, and providing for an effective date. Scott?
Thank you, Mayor. When we hired our architect, we tasked them to help us hire our construction manager, general contractor. So they're the ones that have been holding our hands through this process. And if you remember, the, between the architect and our owners committee, we narrowed it down to four different firms, and then the council was the one who made the decision on which firm we would actually use, which was Big D. In that process, they, there was a, it wasn't a bid process, it was, help me out with my terminology here.
RFP.
It was an RFP, thank you. And so through the RFP process, there are different criterias in which we chose the general contractor. So fee was one of the criteria, but also experience and, and things of that nature that allowed the council to say, we want to make sure we're getting the best bang for our buck. So Big D was the one that was chosen, and as we determined that that was the case, then it was time to now, in essence, negotiate the contract. So there's a standard contract, it's AIA, which is an association that handles standard agreements when it comes to architectural services, general contracting services. So our architect recommended that we look at the general AIA contract, which is Document A133, last updated in 2009, which is a standard form of agreement between owner and construction manager as a constructor. So we received the contract from Big D, it was reviewed by our architect, it was reviewed by the owners committee, and to look at what we needed to account for to make sure that as Pleasant Grove City, we have what we have in regards to the agreement. The actual fee was already negotiated when we accepted the RFP, their proposal, and their bid. So just let me go over a couple items that are in this agreement for, for the council's understanding. It's a 31-page document, and a lot of construction legalese. So we did have Guy Fugel and Dave Holdaway in, as our owners committee, who are familiar with these types of agreements. Mainly Dave Holdaway, who has built numerous schools, was very familiar with these, and then he was the one that was able to, as we talked with the contractor, to make sure that the city's interested, interests were protected. We also had our architect protecting our interests, and there were a few items that were talked about back and forth to make sure that we felt the city was where we needed to be. What this contract says, just a couple things. One, is that after we get the subcontractor bids, is when the city and the general contractor will agree on a guaranteed maximum price. So there's different times in which we can do that. If we decided that we wanted to settle on a guaranteed maximum price before subcontractor bids, we can do that. It's just that the contractors then require a larger contingency, because there's still some unknowns. So what was decided is, it's in everybody's best interest that we get through the subcontractor bids, and then we'll have most of the costs tied down so that we can agree on a guaranteed maximum price. There are still a couple items that won't be known, and those are called allowances, and those allowances will be as part of that price, and there might be a little play in those allowances, but for the most part, once we settle in on this guaranteed maximum price, we know exactly what's in front of us, and then the contractor knows what they have to deliver on. The guaranteed maximum price is a construction cost, so it does not include the soft cost, does not include the architect's fees, does not include furnitures, fixtures, equipment, and those types of things. So those are still the responsibility of the owner, which is us, and so when we have our overall budget, we have a construction budget, and then we have all the other costs that are associated with that. So the guaranteed maximum price will only be addressing the, the construction cost of the buildings. There is a completion date incentive in there. After the guaranteed maximum price is agreed upon, then we will agree on a schedule and a date in which it needs to be completed. At that point, it's written into this agreement, that if they cannot deliver it by that time, that they pay us $500 a day, and that's just the liquidated damages. On the flip side, if they finish it before that day, they get a one-time bonus payment of $3,000 to the contractor for delivering it before the scheduled date. So talking with our architect, that's a pretty standard deal, and thought that that was a fair deal to do it that way. It does say in here that if we can't agree on a guaranteed maximum price, the contract's null and void. Nobody is anticipating that happening, but it is in the agreement, just wanted to make sure you're aware. And then there's also a 5% retainage, and again, this is pretty standard, that as the contractor bills the city with work that they've done, we keep 5% back, so that when the project's completed, we verify that all their subcontractors have been paid, and that the project is to our satisfaction, and then we release the last 5% of that. that the project is to our satisfaction, and then we release the last 5% of that. That's, again, to keep the contractor, to make sure that all that's taken care of. So, any questions?
Does that cover the amount that you said that's being withheld, does that cover a warranty period?
Yes. Well, so the retainage is to, generally speaking, the retainage is to make sure all the subcontractors are paid, but there, there's a warranty period that comes with the work.
And is there a fee associated with that that's held or anything to ensure that those things are taken care of?
No, just the agreement. And their reputation and their, you know.
Council, any questions, comments? Okay, if not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion, Mayor, that we adopt Resolution 2017-30, authorizing you to execute a contract with Big D Construction for construction manager, general contractor, CMGC Services for the proposed public safety building facilities, and providing for an effective date.
Second.
We have a motion by Ben and a second by Lynn, by voice. Diana?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Sid?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
It is unanimous. Let's get this thing done.
Can I just make one comment? Our owners committee, I know it's almost 8:30.
It's not even eight.
It's not a BYU games, it's not that big of a deal. Our owners committee, particularly Guy Fugel and Dave Holdaway, have been really important to this process. Their expertise has just been fantastic. If it was me and the chief sitting around the table trying to figure all this stuff out, it would be, we don't have that expertise in our repertoire. So just appreciate, I want the, the council to know, you probably already know that, but as we've been in meeting after meeting after meeting, we keep going, they have been fantastic. So thanks to them.
While we're on the subject of the PSB, I want to make sure that as we do the Old Direct Center tours for Strawberry Days, that we have specific answers for residents, because I know as they come through, they're going to ask, what are we doing with the material, are we saving it, can they buy a brick? And so I really want to have that, that nailed down, and I think it needs to come from a professional who has the expertise in dealing with the demolition of old buildings like that. So can that be evaluated, and can we have a game plan by the time we do the tours in June for Strawberry?
Yeah, we're working with the contractor right now on, because the, the demolition of the buildings was not part of our contract, this was something that the city was just going to handle. We had the contractor tell us, there's going to need to be a little bit of expertise depending on how many bricks you need to save and that type of deal. So we're working with them right now. They're, they're going to hold our hand through that process and help us, and they're not going to charge us for that, it's nice of them to help us with that. We will actually be doing the paperwork and things, but we do have that on our list of things to get resolved here fairly quickly, so it can be advertised in that manner. We are planning the week of Strawberry Days as they celebrate the building, and they have, you know, the pictures and all the things inside the building that are showing that we will have an elevation and a floor plan and things that show what is going to be replacing that. So people will be able to see, here's, here's a celebration of what, what's here, and then here's what's to come, so. But thank you, Sid, we'll, we'll keep going at that.
Okay, we have continued item 10E. So we're now on to items for discussion, and I believe we have, Scott and Denise are going to tell us a little bit about the schedule for the road funding discussion.
Yes, and mainly just me. We'll let Denise off on this one. I'm going to project it up here so people can follow along. I was gone a couple weeks ago, so I, I did receive feedback from mayor and council. There was a discussion on how to proceed in regards to the road funding, and so I've put together an outline, and I want to, I just want to kind of reiterate that we're talking, what you're going to see first is the city council going line-by-line review of the city budget and how that's going to roll out. But also through that process, I think we'll continue to revisit future new monies, we'll keep revisiting a road fee, we'll keep revisiting whether there's a property tax component to this. And so I don't want it to just be couched as we're going to review the budget, but again, the whole wide spectrum of what we just call road funding, because there's different ways that this thing can be tackled. So, but what you're going to see in front of you here is that what we're setting up is for the city council to go line-by-line review of the city budget. The outline and the format of that review, Denise and I are still working on kind of how that's going to play out. And once we kind of get settled on, on how we think the best way to get numbers in front of everybody so that everybody can understand what's going on, we'll get it in front of the mayor and say, Mayor, here's what we're thinking, are you okay with this? And if the mayor gives us thumbs up, that's the format we'll use. If he comes back and says, no, we need to change it a little bit, we'll, we'll just work through the mayor on that. But, so it hasn't been fully decided on what the outline and the format is, but we are working on that. What we'd like to do, and we'd like to take our next work sessions from June, July, and August, and take, looks like four or five departments, or not necessarily departments, but sections of our budget. And so we'll take four or five sections of the budget each meeting, and so we'll, we'll throw up the line items, and we'll talk about what they mean and those, those types of things. Now, in June, our second meeting in June is a, our work session is Strawberry Days week, and so we usually cancel that meeting. So we have moved the first meeting to Tuesday, June 20th. And that's also the day that we're adopting our final budget, so that will be a regular city council meeting, and we'll be in more of this format, but we'll still go through this process. And, and I'll start with our budgeting philosophy. So we're going to take a few minutes and talk about, as staff and as our elected officials, on how, what our, and this is probably more staff-driven. I mean, this is, this is our budgeting philosophy as staff as we look at line items and as we review it each year, and trying to find out how the money, not how the money's spent, but, you know, as things are spent and how it continues to flow, as things change budget-wise, some of the discussions that we have and the process that we have. So we'll start with that, and then we'll look at the police, fire, streets, engineering. Now, the department heads are, they know that they're up, they haven't necessarily seen this, so if they can't be here one of these nights, then we'll just kind of move some of this around. So this is kind of tentative, but this is kind of the, this is the idea as to what we're going to do. So our work session on the 11th of July, we'd, we'd look at administration, non-departmental, mayor council budget, legal court, economic development, and then the Tuesday, August 8th work session, Parks, Senior Center, Facilities, Community Development, Library, Custodial. That's, that's what we have in front of you. Is there any questions or concerns on the council's part, at least as far as that part's concerned?
Can you email that to us?
Oh, yeah.
Thanks.
Well, it's in your, it's in, and I, I just, I just probably put it in there right before the meeting, so.
Understanding that it's a format rather than an exact time.
Yeah, and fair enough. And that's, and so the, well, the work session, the work session format I just prefer, because we're a little bit more in a, in a setting where we're talking back and forth as opposed to a council meeting where it's more the council addressing the public as opposed to staff addressing the council. So that's, that's kind of what we have outlined at this point.
One concern or thought, I guess, I'd articulate is, one of the challenges with doing it through July, August, is that it's going to be after we've adopted our formal budget for the 2017, 18, I guess, fiscal year.
Yeah, so a couple things. One, if, most of that's a new money discussion, maybe. If we get through a process here and it's August 8th, and it's determined that we have some money that we want to get into roads immediately from current budget, we just set up a budget amendment, we can do it right away. And so, yeah, I mean, that opportunity's there, and I understand what you're saying. I mean, once we adopt our budget, you know, we always have the opportunity to amend it if the council chooses to do so. And I, so I kind of, I started with this, but during this review, further discussion will be held regarding future new monies, property tax, and/or road fees, potential funding mechanisms for roads. And then I know that there was talk of a public hearing a couple weeks ago, if we want to, if we kind of get a game plan and something that we want to throw out to the public for feedback, then I think once we get through this process, that'd be appropriate for us to do that. So I didn't put that on here, but I think what, as we at least get through the budgeting, I call this old money, so if I refer to old money, it's current budgeted money. New money is the new money coming in that isn't necessarily earmarked until the council makes it part of the budget, and then property tax, road fee, or if there's other funding mechanisms out there, too, that would be great.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, I'm looking forward to this discussion. Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Let's go ahead and review our May 9th city council work session. It looks sort of empty, sparse, is that the right way to put it? So we'll be looking mainly at Strawberry Days presentation. Oh, Marty, okay. We'll have that.
Yeah, we want to look at that one additional year. Thanks, I couldn't see the mayor. We want to look at doing that one additional year in the road. So next year's already budgeted, we're going to do one more year based on the current funding allowance.
Great. All right, let's come back now and look at item 13, which is Neighborhood and Staff Business. Libby, do you have anything this evening? Okay, let's go over here. Ken, anything?
Just to mention, DRC this morning, we did receive a concept review for the Drury Hotels, Hotel, so eight-story, 187-room facility down right off of Pleasant Grove Boulevard by the freeway. So we're just starting the process with them. They've mentioned that it'll probably be next year before they actually been, begin construction, but something exciting for down there.
Excellent, thank you. Dion?
I'd just let you know, we had an awesome turnout for our Trail and Arbor Day event. We had about 170 people plus, and 300 and, I'm finding it, 382 and a half hours in volunteer hours. 382.5. So just a reminder, ribbon cutting Saturday, 9 o'clock on the bottom of the valle Vista.
Okay, thank you. Marty?
We're just working on an update to all of our construction projects. We have two pre-construction meetings this week, and so all those projects you'll start seeing impacts to, we'll make sure that they're updated on the construction page and give some estimates on that. Black Hawk is another one that they're nearing construction of the water line, and then we'll know probably on Thursday when they're going to be in there to do the streets, to get those all cleaned up, and so just be aware of that, that's all moving forward.
Thank you, Marty. Anything else? Dave? Nothing. Mike? Sherry?
We just got a report from the state where they compare us to other libraries of similar, not the library size, but population, and we, the 3.17 is the number for 70th percentile on checkout, and our number is 6.10. So we're much, much higher than, than even 70 percentile, so I don't know what that puts us at, but pretty high. So our people are literate and using the library.
Very good.
Also, we have a big activity planned for a week from Friday, so get that on your calendars to come to our Harry Potter party, it's for all ages, and we're expecting a lot of people. We had an employee make 600 wands at home on her own time, just out of the goodness of her heart, and we had cookies donated by Paradise Bakery and, before they went out of business, so they're frozen, but they'll still taste good.
So are the wands made with phoenix feathers or with dragon strings?
Depends on the wand.
Don't worry, Ben, yours will choose you.
That's right. And we do have a special announcement that I can't reveal until that night, but something exciting happening for the library.
Do you have a time?
6:30.
For your announcement?
Yes.
Okay.
So the, we'll have the announcement at, on or around 6:30. It'll be, if the weather's nice down on the patio area on the north, no, south side, right? On the south side, if the weather's not so nice in the theater, and we'll have the announcement and then go forth with our party.
Excellent.
That's it.
Okay, thank you. Denise? Other than you're going to Hawaii? Okay, thank you. Denise is going to Hawaii, if anybody wants to tag along.
Got an extra room, half a room.
Okay. Scott?
Nothing.
Tina? Okay. Kathy? Hey, please sign the plat.
Diana?
Okay, Eric?
A beautiful citizenship in the community with a group, with the Bulldog Patrol Troop 1227, or 1221, one of those. And they, they wanted me to express how much they, the gratitude that they have for us, the job that we're doing, and very loving. I do have to say that I took this home on last Wednesday, and my children ate all of the candy. So this is not the original candy, but it has been. I apologize, Bulldogs.
Did you have anything else you wanted to say?
No, thank you.
Okay, Eric? Nothing? Sid?
Just come back in one second, I'm just pulling something up.
Okay, Lynn?
Got a chance to go to the presentation singing in the rain?
Use your microphone.
It was awesome.
Good. Fantastic. Ben?
I'm good, thanks.
Sid? Okay. I will be gone Friday, Saturday, Sunday, so you're covering. Next week, sorry. The, the following week, the 12th. Okay. You're right. Why don't you hang out afterward, then? We're going to have a, an executive session. Is this your scout group?
No, but I know they do.
Okay. All right. Plats, calendar, we've reviewed what's coming up, and we need to go into an executive session to handle a legal matter. What is the nature of the?
Scott's calling it, so...
Oh, legal, sorry.
Right, there's pending litigation, reasonable or pending litigation?
Yes.
Okay. So whoever makes the motion, that's what it is.
Make a motion, Mayor, if that's where we're at in the agenda. I move that we go into a executive session to discuss pending or eminently reasonable litigation.
We have a motion by Ben, a second by Lynn, all in favor?
Aye.
Take a little bio break, and after we're done, we're going to come back out, and if you want to stick around, we won't do it, we won't do it right now, but after the, after the executive session. Okay, great. Okay.